............................................................................................................................................. All right, roll call. Randy Rins.
Yes.
Judith McGeach.
Here.
Melinda Ballard.
Here.
Baring Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Gary Castles.
Here.
James King.
Here.
All right. Item A in the Executive Committee Report.
Uh, I've got all the checks. Everything was good. Sales taxes are back up again this month. I have to say it, but it's probably because the price of everything is going up. So, but we're collecting a little bit more. It always spikes out as opposed to...
All right. Thank you, Randy. Item B is approved September 8th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes, September 15th, 2022 Senate Meeting and Special Meeting Minutes, and September 29th, 2022 Transportation Committee Meeting Minutes. Motion.
Sue.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item C is recognize Bambi Hatfield as our son and boy of the month. Scott.
Thank you guys again for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be with you and to recognize your boy of the month, Miss Hatfield. If you would join me up here. When you get here later, make us sit on the front row. And not late, just later than everybody else.
She was. She was. I wondered her last name.
Uh, there were two different votes that had something to say about Bambi, and I'd like to read both of them if I could. The first one is from Elementary Director Kim Adams. Bambi works hard and does her job to perfection. She thinks ahead and knows what you need before you even ask. She ensures CES runs like a well-oiled machine. I appreciate her calm nature and how she handles 5,000 things all at once with a smile. Thank you for all you do. And then your principal, Mrs. Gilpatrick, said, "Bambi is the definition of an amazing secretary. She goes above and beyond her regular duties on a daily basis to make sure our school is running smoothly. She bandages skin knees, helps comfort when they're sick, and that is students and staff. She counsels students when they need a shoulder to cry on. She always has a positive spirit and is kind to everyone." These are only a few reasons why she deserves to be recognized as Boy of the Month. But we didn't want you to have to read a novel. So please join me in recognizing Miss Bambi Hatfield for call parish employee of the month.
Thank you.
This is where you're able to give a speech if you would like to do that, or you just wave and smile.
Thank you. Come on, take a picture. We're gonna take it up front with our pretty stick board. Thank you.
All right. Item D is resolution to accept the Louisiana compliance questionnaire for all purposes.
David, is that the stuff you sent us?
Uh, it's...
Month?
No, I just printed this yesterday. So, I don't know. I don't remember what I gave you a month ago.
No, I'm thinking about that questionnaire you sent me.
Oh, no, that's not it. Yeah, that's what it is. Uh, this is just compliance questionnaires where the auditors ask us all these questions that way we're giving them everything, and we said yes, and whether we're in compliance on everything, and I think we are. Hope we are. So, that's the purpose of the audit. Uh, do make sure that you check page seven of seven. That's where y'all's information is listed. Just make sure it's current. And if it's not, y'all just flag it and get it later and correct it. And that's it.
What are we looking at, David? Seven to seven?
Page seven to seven.
Your information? Uh, on this, babe?
Yeah.
Uh, none of your cards, so...
It's the last one. It's the last one. You can't respect it. It's like, like, for money, yeah.
This?
Yeah. It's the last letter.
Let's see what we're looking at.
Anyway, it's just one line for everyone that's listed. Hopefully, and I copied it from last year.
Okay, my whole, my number is wrong.
Okay.
I give it to you.
Okay, that'll be fine. And that's it.
Thank you, David.
I might need to leave the wrong number.
That's right. Y'all need to hurry that.
I will do it.
I'll make a motion to approve this compliance questionnaire.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item E is discuss plans for bus buses per recommendation from the Transportation Committee. Uh, we had a meeting, me, myself, Ms. Judithine, and Maria, and Nikki, and we had several others, and I believe we're gonna say I live.
Well, James is prepared.
Are you prepared, James, for telephone?
And there's a handout in here he created for you.
I created a little synopsis of while we're at this point. Uh, about 15 to 17 years ago, there was a, there was about a period of five years consecutive that the district did not purchase any buses, and that was also verified by David Soney. Kind of looked back at some records and showed that there was a lot of money in transportation and couldn't figure out why, and the district just didn't purchase any buses for that period of time. So now that's caused an issue now with the age of the buses. Uh, currently, the district owns 10 buses. We lease 11. Uh, four out of these 10 buses must, need to be replaced. They really do. I put must, but yeah, they, they really must be replaced because their mechanical issues starting to develop. Uh, two of those four are already out commissioned because of parts. Uh, they're international buses that started to be purchased after a while, and the company knew that there were engine problems, and they just quit making all the parts because of the engine problems and just said, "Well, forget it. We'll start back from scratch." So, we're kind of hung out on that. Also, the diagnostic software to implement any repairs on those, the company Monroe, was not happy anymore. Uh, so we're looking at, we want to hire a towing service to tow them to Alexandria in the effort that we might be able to get them fixed down there. That's still up in the air. Also, uh, the leased buses are costing us about 85 to 90 a day, uh, and the reason why is, you know, eight of those are equipped with air conditioners, so that's why it's up. Uh, in the future, though, the company has basically stated that because of everything going up, the lease is gonna have to be increased to probably 100 to 125 a day, whether it's air conditioning versus non-air conditioning.
And we're putting the days on the internet and everything.
That is correct. Future plan. This is what we basically kind of hammered out. Uh, and right now, we need to make all efforts to purchase two buses. We need to do that. If we're going to start owning our buses again and getting away from the lease program, uh, we need to start this. Uh, each year, uh, the, the board, we need to make every effort to try to purchase two if possible, but we cannot go a year without purchasing a bus. Um, once we get all of the buses that the district currently owns replaced, then we'll start knocking off the leased buses, buying two, returning two, buying two, returning two, until we get back to an entire fleet that is all owned by the, uh, the district. Uh, the purchased bus that we're looking at, I think that was also included in y'all's handout, uh, they're a Bluebird Vision 71 passenger, gas fuel. We're going to swap from diesel to gas. One, money, $1.50 to $2 higher price for diesel, plus all of the additives and filters that diesel engines cost are higher than gas, plus the EPA is fixing to start, uh, implementing new regulations on diesel engines for buses, and that's gonna cause more cost effective, uh, cost, uh, there. Uh, these buses will be equipped with air conditioning, uh, estimated cost $124,619.47 per bus. Uh, and if we can get the approval, uh, we could probably have two of those new buses on routes, maybe by the end of this month, but definitely before we get out the next few weeks.
James, what, uh, go ahead, Randy.
So what's the cost of lease? What, over a one-year period, what's the cost of us leasing a bus?
Uh, currently, it was around $23,800 per bus, uh, and that's probably around $25,000. Uh, that's adding cameras. So, it's around $25,000 per, per year. A bus that we buy lasts roughly 20 years, so that's around $25,000 versus 20 years of $25,000 in our payments that are going up. So, I mean, it's definitely, I think previously whenever Jeff was here, I think it was a little bit more equal, but now it's just gone way beyond around...
Goes up. That's gonna increase another $5,000 or so a year.
Or more.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. And there, James alluded to prior years. There, there was one year we had a, uh, increase of fund balance by right at a million, and, and that, and there was two, three other years that had around $300,000 to the good on, uh, on those other years. Those years, we weren't buying buses, and we probably shouldn't have been. So really, we have the money to spend it. In theory, it just looks really bad because maybe we already got a $300,000 projected fund down, uh, decrease on the general fund. In theory, now we're spending money that we now already have that should have been dedicated to buses back in 16, 17, 18.
And we're purchasing these outright, and we're purchasing most of them.
Right.
All right. You'll be able to put your hand on to get yours.
But see, Jeff's logic was, you know, that, that, that was in fact what was costing us the most because his issue was that leasing, you know, would be cheaper. So I'm looking at, you know, four or five years ago versus now, you know, I, I burn soup on land, which is almost as much as, as diesel, so we're going from, uh, I guess diesel back to, uh, you know, regular gas. I mean, so what's the, what's, is it something that we really need to do like right today? Uh, do we need, because I, I like to look at it as more, not, I just don't know if this is the, the best balance that we can look at. But if it's approved, fine and okay. I, I just don't want to be, uh, you know, jumping and rushing adjustments because we don't know if gas is gonna go up. We don't know if it's gonna stay down. We don't know what it's gonna do. So I wouldn't want to just jump off in a creek and start swimming, and I don't, and I'm, we must have have to, you know, start. That's just an idea. And I said, we don't have to go forward. I'm just kind of lyricist right now.
So are you telling me that all the buses will go to gasoline, or you're gonna leave them like they are?
Everything right now is gonna stay where it is, but the buses that we're gonna start purchasing...
They will be gas.
They're gonna go gas. So you'll be buying two gas buses a year.
Yeah, but the decision's gonna have more regulations on it.
Yeah.
And the guy from, the guy from the company came and spoke with us, and of course George Duncan was here, because he's the one who's been, and he gave us kind of the history of the, it's been 16 years that he's been working here, and they stopped buying, we stopped buying. And so we had no idea because I had been hearing the lease was the better option, lease was the better option, but until David actually ran the numbers, and we started looking at it over time, he was like, "Mm, no, need to go back here." Our big thing was we need to have a plan in place so that we're not scrounging and, and at a point where it's been 16 years since we bought a bus. We need to get on, you know, so that when we're all gone, there's a plan in place for the people who are, are after us.
We can go electric buses if you want.
Oh, so you're, are you saying that is their money spent here for transportation from the state every year, strictly for buses?
No. I mean, it's just part of MFP.
It's just in with the MFP. Do you know what percentage of that it is?
No. Some magic formula they come up with and with a spreadsheet that's literally as long as that tape.
But the money's there.
Yes.
It's just in the general fund now.
It's just painful to increase our...
Pull it out.
Yeah, pull it out whenever. And nobody really wants to pull it out. But I, I don't think we have a choice, or we don't have a choice.
And this buses will be air-conditioned in the future.
Yes, ma'am. It's in the, it'll be in...
So yeah, if you look here, this, this gives you all the details.
I think we need to do something pretty good, but we got some that's not in good shape.
Well, and that was what George had said, that he, there's two buses that he does not feel comfortable putting kids...
They're old.
They're too old.
Yes, and there's two others that are parked, right?
Yes.
It's not nothing at all.
I'm assuming you've researched the difference between gas and diesel and the expenses.
We already have three gas burners on our, on our lease fleet right now.
You don't have any trouble with them?
He said it was far less trouble when he was here.
He, I actually read him...
And you're strictly looking at all of the filters that have to go into diesel engines, yes.
You run the nap and get it instead of having to order it from somewhere, probably, from the district.
You're gonna have to order for gas, too. I mean, so it, it's really about, you know, the preference, you know, more or less. So, again, you know, we knew what we're gonna do. I just, I'm more cautious about moving forward on stuff, uh, rather than, Brandon's word, researching and make sure that it's a valid position that we're taking versus because, you know, there's a, an assumption that's being made that may or may not be beneficial to us. So I'm not saying we don't, we don't need to go forward with it. I don't think we need to rush to go forward.
Well, see, he's just gonna do the two, talking about the two new ones we're gonna get.
So are you wondering like, de- diesel or gas?
Well, I don't know what, what would be best.
Just purchasing versus leasing.
Yeah.
Oh.
What I'm understanding is that one time leasing was cheaper, but since everything costs more now, then it's running into more than...
We just have to go with Mr. Soney since we've done the numbers.
Well, no, I don't...
Until he ran the numbers, we didn't know. And that was the purpose of having the committee meeting, was so that we could get all the people together and we can have these discussions.
So the committee saw the numbers?
Yes.
In the future, you know, so we can know that, you know, provide that to, you know, us in advance so we can, because if I've seen it, it'd be different. I, I probably would take a different approach. So it's nothing, there's no reflection on what was done. It's just, you know, in the future, if we can get it, it always cuts down, uh, you know, a course that I may have that may, uh...
We gotta sheet something.
Oh, something.
You have it.
It's the second page of what Kaylee made of...
Oh, here it is.
Y'all got it, what?
Hold on.
I have a rolling on it.
So you have, you have the sheet that you did for us that had the 20 years and how much it was gonna cost us?
Yeah, that was the second page of the handout. Uh, from the very front of the binder that Kaylee made of copy of, it's, I think.
It is?
Unless I just...
Let's see. Look at yours.
How might you say it? It's on my own.
I'm not sure.
It didn't come to think of.
You did that, I don't know.
Okay.
Your binder's better than ours.
Sorry. I am sorry.
You gave one of those to me.
Your binder's better than mine.
I'm gonna stick this in my binder just, Kaylee gave me everything else, and all this was worth it.
We did, when we had the Transportation Committee meeting, he had all this information where we looked at it and we were able to see over the course of the next 20 years.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's...
Well, my one vote, yea or nay on start what's going on. I just would like, see, because again, I like to be able to defend what it is I'm going for against.
Yeah, everybody's been... Uh, this is the leasing. Uh, that's where they're gonna try to split out. So, I'm, uh, pretty familiar with that. And, you know, really, we just do, you know, $25,000, which is a, the current price, not the price that's gonna go to it. That's how much it costs to have all 20 buses that we're leasing, 29 buses. So it's $49,000 a year, $13,000 dollars over 20 years, versus 4.7 million if you bought every bus at $225,000. I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, 125,000, I did just 100,000 right maintenance, just boiling out a number. So, let's say it's about, about, maybe just a five.
And that's not what we expected to go into the meeting and decide. We were expecting to go into the meeting and say, "We need to switch to all these buses," until they ran the numbers, and you're like, "Oh, okay."
I was never saying...
It's a good thing you're a number guy.
I have a brother on, on this, on 18 Wood, and he said that my friend was calling with so many safety issues, filters this, filters that, uh, he's not gonna put on any deal. Even though, uh, driving and transporting goods is, uh, pretty favorable, but the issue of people that do it up to date, and they are extremely cautious and, and stopping these guys and driving these trucks, they're not safe yet. And, uh, one of the biggest thing he was telling me about the diesel filters and all this, not just the filter for the gas, but about everything.
Oh, they alluded to it in the meeting, that, that they're cracking down on that and...
And they're talking about doing away with doing the diesel.
Cummings has always been a diesel-producing engine company. They're starting to swap from diesels to gas burners because of those new restrictions that are coming down the line for the EPA.
They don't have seat belts on all the seats, right? Look, huh.
Do I hear a motion that we...
I'm not a motion. Then we go ahead, go forward with, with the recommendation from the committee and...
Y'all all ready? That's about...
I'm not certain. We'll second it.
All right, you second it. Do we need a pro call?
We'll be gone.
None?
Well, this has fixed it.
All, all in favor?
Kelly, my conscience tells me to abstain, so I'm abstaining.
What about who's gonna get the new buses?
Is there a lottery system?
That would be me and George sitting down, and they will go on the longest routes first.
Okay. Yeah. I know that's probably gonna be a big deal.
It's gonna be an issue, but...
Oh, they're gonna...
Yes, potentially not even to be able to use this year.
Yeah, he said something about, yeah, he was saying something about next month.
Yeah, because we hadn't even talked about leasing.
I guess he changed that. He was saying about next month.
Well, well, he was able to, he's, he's holding the buses right now.
Okay, until we decide.
Until we decide.
Might need a text.
The only thing, the only thing that has to be put in that bus now is that air conditioning unit. So, uh, once he found out that he could get those two new buses to us, then we backed off and said, "Okay, we don't need to lease the two. We'll just roll right in with these as soon as he gets ready."
And he will, uh, he will get those air conditioners in there quickly because he plainly told us that that's how he made money, was when he sold buses, not leasing buses.
All right. Item L is consider approving potential budget adjustment?
Well, since we're buying buses, we need to change our, uh, budget, which is painful to talk about because you're going from a $300,000 debt set to a projected $550,000 dollar budget for just transportation. I mean, in that line, I have $250,000.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
I think it's repetitive, sorry.
We're amending the budget for the purchase of two buses for $250,000 strictly for that one line item.
Yes.
To go into a deep...
To go into a deep...
But we had money from years gone by, remember, when we did buy buses?
That's true. It's just...
That's true.
We're spending all year monies, sort of. But, I mean, what scares me is the number of buses we will be buying in the future, which, again, I don't see where we have a choice on it. Uh, I mean, instead of that, have parents bring their kids, which obviously is not even remotely an option. So...
Well, well.
Yeah.
Not for some people, no.
Not for everyone.
Well, I mean, if you got one kid that's got, that does not have an option, I mean, we're locked in.
So we're gonna try to fix the two that are broke right now. Not anymore.
They're, they're old.
Yeah, the parts are, one's got a blown, one's got a blown turbo.
You said it was something about taking a tow truck to Italy?
We, we might, depending on how much that's gonna cost to, to, we first, we gotta see if the company down there has the software. They don't have software.
Make sure we have parts.
So, so then you'll sell them like open market for somebody to do a camp or something with them?
I don't know. I gotta do all that.
I don't know.
Alice did that. You can recoup some.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that makes it a dog.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, people do that.
You put it up in the paper and they'll come back, like, you know?
That's what Duncan said.
Yeah.
So, so David, is the projection that buses are gonna go?
I would, I would, I would, I would, versus leasing.
Okay.
Versus leasing.
Well, leasing is all the way going on. Uh, I mean, the 125 that were locked in, I think that's kind of...
I guess we're scared of it. Two or four years ago, we talked about that. Now we're flipping over to some other, that's just too soon. The logic is not there for me to see, but it may be.
Well, it's been over a whole year since.
Well, Jeff, Jeff, it's been recent that he was talking about leasing was...
I wish I could.
And then running another six-year track, you know, so you're saving.
We're gonna have to buy a bus, but you know, so you're saving $280,000.
Are we gonna, do we have a motion to approve the budget?
I'll make that.
All right, you guys second? All in favor, say aye.
I'll do a roll call.
All right, we can do a roll call.
To do a budget.
All right.
Ms. Melinda, you motion? Is that right?
I did. Okay, sorry.
I'll say it. But it's gonna hurt to see the money go down, but I know that it's for a good cause.
It's gonna hurt to see the money go down, but I know that it's for a good cause.
Okay, for a minute in the budget on the one line, uh, Mr. Randy Rance.
Roll call for them then.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Baron? Uh, Bass? Uh, Mr. Castle? Mr. King?
All right. So a lot of the budget that we, a lot of the general fund is for monies that wasn't spent before?
Say that, man.
A lot of the general fund that we have now is for monies that was not spent before?
I think we should have bought buses in the prior year. And therefore, we wouldn't have the fund balance that we have currently.
Because I mean, our balance looks good, but now we're taken out of it.
And I think we're probably going back to where we would have been had we stopped the money on the buses.
Okay, I just need to hear you say it.
We shouldn't have spent as much on the number of buses that we made and on which we were involved in prior years.
If we would have bought them, they would have been probably a lot cheaper.
Because I think we were buying buses not that long ago for 75, 80,000. Now we're at 125. So that's scary.
The one we bought was 98,000, that's been two years ago.
Okay, so we jumped that much. That quick. Which is thank, and I think that is probably where some of the numbers have changed.
If you combine routes, that wouldn't lessen the amount of buses that you bought? Have you considered that, looking at routes that may be combined?
Hard to do. Now you increase driving time.
Yeah, more gas.
Pickup time.
Yeah, because some kids are already catching the bus before seven, at my house, it's all right at seven o'clock.
Again, what I'm looking at is, is all option, not just one option that's being thrown at me because I don't float like that. I, you know, it may be something out there we haven't thought.
I know that just in my time, we have dissolved two routes. So, I mean, that has happened.
So it's just a question. Yeah, if it can't happen, it can't happen, but at least it's been asked. I'm just, when I got a, Professor Tomatol, you vote with your conscience or your constituents or both? My conscience is telling me that this is not something that I can see right now. I may be able to see it tomorrow, because I may come and talk to you, you may get it, you may get me to see it, but right now, I just can't see it and I'll never vote on something I can't see. So I could be wrong and I'm hoping I am, but I just, you know, my head is kind of spinning right now. I can't get it. But let me tell you, it may be from my morning because I lost my keys, I left my bill for and all this, so it may just be the day to start.
You find a better day.
Yeah, I ended up finding it, but I left my money at the supreme unletted. Well, it was, they were still there, I made the.
See, that was good.
You see?
That's a positive though.
I may have, I was going out and it blew it.
No, 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 no.
All right, Adam G., to discuss substitute positions, please give.
Well, Gary, I called and talked to Nick about it. Got a little bit resolved on it. I guess my issue was, Ms. Robinson had talked to me about it, and I talked to a couple of retired teachers, and I talked to superintendent in Richmond, talked to Mr. Lett, you know, about the fee at the getting. $92, I think it'd be, right?
For a certified teacher.
And I'm talking about a certified teacher that's gone to college, did what they needed to do, retired. When they come and work, you basically can go to, you know, McDonald's, Burger King, or anywhere else that make about the same amount. So my thing was not for the board to do any transaction tonight, it just kind of look, you know, to the future. You know, they should be compensated and I think what happens oftentimes is that we take for granted that they're gonna come here and work for $92 with a specialized, a certified, you know, degree to come and substitute for eight hours, six hours, whatever it is, for $92, take your taxes out, you're basically making, what, eight times seven, it's six, eight times eight, nine times eight, seven, $2, $9 an hour. I just think that's an insult and a slap to them for being able to, because we need substitute teachers. Okay? And I'm not talking about with a degree, I'm talking about a certification in education, not a degree person that general studies or whatever. I think those people need to be looked at, they need to be rewarded because I supported the superintendent raise, I supported David raise, I supported everybody's raise that's here. So I try to always strike that same tone with everybody. Those people need to be considered. I think the board, the superintendent doesn't make that decision. That's a decision that the board made. So I think the board needs to, at some point, look at that, not now, not next week, not next month, maybe at the beginning of the year of the 2023, 24 school year, whatever. That pay needs to, it just needs, it doesn't need to be astronomical, but it needs to be where they feel like they're coming to work, because here it is. If they went to McDonald's, we wouldn't have it. And I'd much rather have a certified teacher in the classroom versus somebody off the street or somebody with a general studies degree, not knocking that, but when you look at the validation of that certification, that teacher's in there and they're not there just babysitting the classroom. They are there, and I told Nick at the day, they are there to do a job that they have specialized in. So I think that needs to be looked at, considered.
Retired teacher, most of what we're talking about is coming back and substitute.
Well, I was saying, how many certified teachers do we have that are substitute?
Well, it didn't matter if we had one.
So I just, I mean, I just, a little bit of backstory here, David put these numbers together, that the first column there is what we, what we currently pay, the $92 for certified, 82 for a bachelor's degree, and 72 for no degree. If you go all the way over to the right-hand side, last year in August, y'all gave them a raise, they were making 84, 74, and 64. So we did give them a raise. And the last time that we had given a raise was in the year 2012. So it was a long time coming, you know, but we are. So we, and of course, in my, in my superintendent group, and I know in Angela's personnel group, and I don't trip in your business group, but there's been discussion about substitute, you know, what substitutes make, and so we had access to the surrounding districts and how much they're paying their substitute teachers. And, and I think we're, we're pretty comparable, you know, if you look across, you know, especially the top there, we only fall behind two other districts in what they're paying their certified teachers.
But see, Nick, my issue is, I'm not concerned about what another district is doing, I'm concerned about what we can do here to make those individual people feel valid. How many hours a day they work? Eight dollars? How many, how many hours they teach? Nine dollars divided into 92 dollars for a certification, that's an insult to a person that's got that degree. What I'm saying is, not now. I'm saying that we need to look forward to doing that for those people because you can't, because we can do it, that's not good enough, Nick, because we can do it. We should be striving to do better.
And this is a decision y'all make, I'm just trying to tell you where, where we are here. And what I also want to say is that if you have a teacher who comes in and does a long-term substitute, a certified, we try to get certified teachers to take maternity leave, or if you have an extended disability leave, then they get paid by contract $150 a day because it's, it's over a course of time. So a regular substitute comes in one day and covers a class, but if you have a long-term, you're doing the lesson planning and you're doing the grading of papers and all the things that go along with that. So we do pay that. And this is just all the information for you to have, for you to decide, you know, what, what you think we need to do. I just want to make sure all that information's there.
And what I'm saying, that one day, to me, is the same as this person coming in for 30 days. They're both subbing for Calhoun Parish school system, they both are valid, they both are valuable individuals, and if that person is certified, $92 a day, they can go to Popeye's, they can go to McDonald's, they can go anywhere else than devote their time to the school. I'm saying that I think that the board should at least look at that and consider. I'm not going so far to say we have to do it, but I just don't think we, I think we do stuff because we can do it and we're so used to doing it all the time, we don't want to do it any better. I think we can do better. Every month, for the last couple of years, we've been issuing out, issuing out, issuing out. What I'm saying is, look at those people who have a value. You can't get cafeteria workers, I'm almost certain. I wouldn't come and sub for you. There's a lady who works on a tugboat that's right next door to me, I asked her today to come and sub. Told her to pay, she wouldn't come and sub. So because we've been doing it, don't mean that we have to do it, I'm not concerned about Richmond, Washita, nor other school system, I'm worried about what we can do here to make it better, to more lucrative, make it more lucrative and more convenient for those people to feel like they are valued, because otherwise, $92 a day is just an insult.
We give the subs, when we, you said we think I'd rate increase, did everybody in the sub department get an increase like the cafeteria workers and the bus drivers?
Can I say something?
What was the increase?
What was the increase?
What was the increase?
Would you can raise those substitutes?
Well, I'm assuming this is what it was. It went from 84 to 92, 74 to 82, is that right?
When will he get paid, or she get paid? That's the issue with the substitute. They work one day and then wait, wait 29 days to get paid. I tried it when I retired. Nonsense. Work two, working three days out of the week and getting paid 20 days later. Come on, let's, let's be honest about this. You can raise that substitute, what if that substitute is a person that's using that money to survive on?
Well, we just said gas going up, we purchasing buses. Gas is going up for those people to drive to work, gas is going up for those people to get here, to go back home, gas, the food bill is going up, $92 again to this board is just not beneficial. I think the board needs to at least consider. Notice I said consider, I didn't say we had to do anything, but don't just close the door. I talked to Sheldon, he said, Baron, my board right now is not gonna do anything, but you know what? They didn't close the option, they said that they would deal with it in January and the pay is gonna go up, so if they can do it, why can't we? At least consider, at least look at it, at least let these people feel like, well, there's some value in Calhoun Parish, because anytime you give a raise and you let a person feel like they're valued, they're gonna give you more. We give raises all the time, I've sat here and supported every raise that have come this way, every raise. There's not a raise that I've voted against that I can name in my 30 years on this board. Again, before I go out, those bus drivers, those cafeteria workers, those secretaries, all of those people need to be looked at rather than overlooked because every time we give raises, we give a little, but it's time to give them a little bit more because it's like a six-cylinder vehicle, all those valves work together. When one plug is going wrong, everything works, not good. So I'm saying, again, board, let's consider, that should be it, it shouldn't be no debate on consider.
We consider, I consider, I definitely consider. I have never said.
I'm fine and okay with considering. And Nick, I would love for you to give input, being a superintendent, because I asked you today, I'm not saying we have to give them 150, I'm not saying 1/30, I'm not saying 100, I'm just saying we need to look at it to see if there's something else out there that we can do further. Because I think when you give them in your classroom, they'll do a whole lot better.
I'll be with them, I'm strict, I don't know what a bus driver's make a day, a sub? Bus driver makes a day?
55.
55 dollars? They can take care of car wherever they at in this parish, full daylight, and drive and take a bus up. And come back, and they go back, and they go back, and go back, and go back. They not gonna do it.
I still say, we can look at, and the issue of, maybe in every two weeks, they would work for a lesser amount. I guarantee you, I guarantee you they would.
Now, what is he saying? That would have to change the law.
I'm saying, don't wait till the end of the month to pay these people, that they might collect $75 or $100.
Can we do that? You can ask that. We can do that.
We can, we can.
That's something we can look at right away.
We need to look at that.
All the subs are paid on the 10th.
Yeah.
I mean.
Could we change that, every two weeks or every week or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, if we look at it, I certainly was not prepared to talk about.
But is that, is that an option?
I don't know if it's an option, but I mean, we certainly look at it.
Yeah.
We need to look at this more.
That makes a whole lot of sense right there, what it's up. And as far as pay raises, yeah, I think, I think the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, the maintenance people, they need raises, no doubt about it. I also feel like, well, everybody needs a raise, no doubt, but, but I also feel like, as far as certified teachers, I do, you know, Baron made the comment, one day is the same as, as a month, I don't believe that. I believe the people that are there working long-term, they're making lesson plans, that are planning and doing, doing all that, are gonna be there for three months, they should be paid just like a regular teacher, as a regular teacher pays out. Now, if I'm gonna come in for one day and I'm gonna sit there and babysit kids for a day?
It's not babysitting.
Well, well, it's real.
That's an insult to those people.
But if I'm gonna come in and I'm, and I'm gonna keep a class and I'm gonna keep an orderly and I'm gonna let them flow through the motion from the lesson plans that that teacher before me gave me, then no, I don't think they should make 150 a day, I think they should make less.
I think, I think the term babysitting.
Well, okay, I take it babysitting.
Well, but you're saying, you can't excuse a dog after some bitch. What I'm saying is, is this, my position was, is this, and, and that's, that's what this board issue is, there's always resistance to making positive change, to doing stuff for this parish. All I said was, let's consider.
Oh, no, I agree, we should consider.
I'm not putting a dollar amount or anything on it, I'm just saying that I think it would be very productive if we can do something to try to attract those people here and to hear educators whispering and disagreeing with that position, that's, that's, this parish will never reach its perfected design because there is so much cloudiness that exists. I, I think we need to get beyond that. I just think we have too many doors that are closed because it's not their idea, it's, it's not this idea, it's coming from another person. What I'm saying is, Baron has always supported Enner and everybody, and I'm gonna do that for the next four years. As a matter of fact, it's gonna be a little bit more different than what it has been. I'm saying that we need to consider those people and I would like for the board, not the superintendent, the board to consider that. And if, if we decide to do it, fine, if we don't, but at least they can know that we arrived at a, you know, at a position.
I think we all agree with you.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, I'm not being, I'm not a different.
I agree with the board, I'm not, I'm leaving that up to everybody else, I just put it out there.
Well, you have, you have information, if you need any more information to consider, just ask us and we can put those numbers together for you or we can put, you know, we're just.
So we can come back and look at it like in January and see kind of what's going on with it then? And maybe we could find out the raises and stuff that we've done.
Well, we can look at the March, the fiscal, what is it, the?
June is a.
What is the numbers that you guys look at?
Oh, we have a P. N..
M. S. P.
Well, it's actually October 1.
Yeah, and then February, then over the month.
Then February, then the money does.
And check on the two-week pay as well.
But eight, eight dollars is not a paper.
I mean, it sounds like a reasonable.
Eighty-two dollars, ninety-two dollars.
Well, I can give you an example of that, I mean, it is, and just because I hired four new and they were like long-term subs, so they worked as a sub through September, so they'll get October 10th, that's sub pay, but they won't get a regular paycheck till November 20th. Because it's a holdback, so, I mean, it makes sense, because that, what I'm talking about, I mean, that's a long time.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of that work that's gotta be considered, is what does the payroll department have to do, what are the secretaries or the, you know, transportation director center, what are they gonna have to do to get that paperwork in? Right now, it's do it a certain time to make it by payroll, we're gonna have to double that, so it'll be twice that you're getting all that in. There's just a lot of things that we need to consider, not saying we can't do it, we just need to talk about those things and see, is it feasible or not?
I mean, we're in a stronger position in payroll, you know, because we hired, you know, that position. So, I mean, we, we are in a much better position to be able to do something like that. Again, I'd have to look at the ins and outs on the software and see, see where our options are. I would think it shouldn't be a problem, but that's without looking at everything else that comes into play. So, I mean, it's certainly a very valid idea. So, I, I mean, it's certainly a very valid idea.
I think that's something we ought to look into, that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and, and, you know, along the same lines, I mean, whenever you hire a new teacher at the beginning of the year, I mean, she starts working on August fifth.
Yeah, she don't get paid a little month.
She ain't get a check till.
She ain't get a check.
It's a long, long stretch. So, if they have no background, back support, you know, mom and dad, or husband, or wife, uh, I mean, that's a long, long stretch, so.
All right. Adam H is the financial update.
I love talking about that. Uh, you can skip page one to five and go to two to five, which is basically the same information, but it has comments on it. Uh, the big things to look at under maintenance of plant, that's line item twenty-six hundred under account. Uh, electrical has gone up from sixty-three thousand last year to a hundred and twenty-three thousand for the first three months of this year. I mean, that is extraordinary. Uh, I don't, I, I lay all that on things, but, uh, just get it. Uh, no, all that's just normal costs that's, everybody has seen personally as well. Uh, security officer, we paid fifteen thousand last year and, or we owed him, we owe Caldwell Parish Sheriff's Office fifteen thousand last year. We, they did not bill us, and that might have been just because of an internal turmoil they had over there, and we didn't notice on our side. So we, so we paid them both years for this year, so that was thirty thousand. And insurance has increased just in that one line item, seventy thousand dollars. It increased overall a hundred and three thousand in different line items. So those are the big numbers to look at, um. So that, that's the general fund. Sales tax fund is coming along beautifully. Uh, lunch fund, uh, there was a little bit of higher cost on supplies, around twenty thousand dollars, that's the difference between the prior year and the current year. And then... Y'all have a maintenance fund? Did that make the cut? Okay, it did make the cut around for some reason. And I think I made the copy, so I keep, I keep planning on it. Um, I think we have a twenty thousand dollar difference on that, or it increased on cost, and that was due to a lot of the, um, sodium upgrades running through maintenance. Those are supposed to be in the general fund, so we won't move those over. And, uh, and then there was a sump pump for thirty thousand at the high school that we didn't have last year that we have this year. So those, those, those are the changes for the maintenance fund. Nothing, nothing was great number except for sales tax, but sales tax is in the fund.
You just need your money here.
No, none of that, I get something done here.
All right, thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Adam H is district leaders update.
All right. Start Monica. Um, everything's going really well, we're still, we have, we enrolled, um, thirty-three-year-olds this week. So right now, we have ninety-nine four-year-olds for pre-K, sixty-one three-year-olds at Kelly, and we've got four that are waiting on their birthdays, ready to come. And there's several still in queue, we've got some registered that are not turning three until January, February, that are already in there, so, um, you know, same with their states there, they'll, they'll be allowed in. Uh, we have one child at Lolly's Clubhouse that's one of our funded kids, they have twenty-nine kids in their total, one is in one of those seats that we, um, help support them with. We did get our, um, scores for, um, both Kelly and the pre-K are rated at high proficient, which is like a B. Um, if you, we don't have letter grades on ours, so it would be like a B, which means our district's score will be a B, because it's just the two of us. Now, next year, the day Carol gets scored, so that'll, um, feed into that. Um, the teachers have, uh, completed one cycle of the, uh, Lena, the vest we told y'all about wearing, and they recorded the, the voice back and forth. And the teachers were very apprehensive of that, they felt like it was recording everything they said, and we had told them that, and the trainers told them that, it was just vibrations. And it was really interesting, and they, they've done so well, especially the teachers at Kelly have like dug into that and looked at it and, um, were excited about it. And seeing those kids, like we said, they realize those kids that they never, um, really talked to. Uh, we did find, um, there's one child that, um, he mumbles a lot to himself. He's, he's non-verbal, he doesn't really talk, but he's deadly mumbling, and his like score was really high. So you have to look at those things along with it, but we start the, um, the next group, so half the teachers at each site did it this time, then will switch out, and then they'll go through another cycle so they can see the difference. So that's been great. Rhonda has done all the, um, the testing, um, for the Kelly, the new Acadian screening they're doing with both the three and four-year-olds. And has implemented a Hagerty phonics program, she's already progress monitoring and seeing growth in that, so. Lot going on, they're busy and everything's going really well. And I just got back from a, um, Head Start Director's Retreat, first time they've ever had one that I know of. And that's what I told them, it was the most worthwhile thing I've ever been to, ever, and that, that's, I don't mind, I mean, you hate being gone all the time, but when you go and you come back, or you feel like you didn't waste your time, it's always. In Great Mon, Texas, and I don't, I can't tell you why the Louisiana Head Start Retreat was in Great Mon, Texas, but it was nice.
Good, thank you, Monica.
Well, you know, ever since we hired you, you always do a good job, you always be precise, you always give us the information, you know, that we need, and you're always professional when you do what you're doing. So I would vote for you to have a raise as well.
Thank you.
Cause remember, if, nobody will tell you what you need to hear when you're living, they'll tell you when you're dead. So I just learned now, you know, you give every reward while, you know, you can, and I just think you do a good job down there at the school. It's been a while since I've been, it's been a while since I've been, you know, to a lot of schools, but, you know, be it as it may, it, it always shows here. So, you know, for those who may not know, that may be looking there, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Albert Einstein did speak to you, story or five? He was labeled a fool.
Thank you.
Um, well, as I mentioned earlier, I did, um, fill the four positions that I had, so I am fully staffed, so that's good. Um, and, you know, we do have a few subs, not as many as we would like to have, but we're working on that. Um, but everything else is going good.
For fifty-two dollars, I'm gonna tell them not to sub.
Mine is sixty-six.
I would get more.
That's, that's a fourteen-dollar increase, I, I might decide to. Nah, I'm just playing, nah, I'll try to, you know, it's, it's, it is hard.
Yeah.
It's, it's real hard.
Thank you. Ms. Wiley?
Thanks, Sarah.
Well, last week, we had our, uh, presenter in, our national and international presenter, and he did a wonderful job with the, um, with the high school, junior high school, and some elementary, with some board members there. How did you enjoy it, Mr. Glass?
Well, I, Nick, I appreciate your invite, man. Uh, I just think parents should have seen more, uh, you know, because the issues that he touched on would actually help us, you know, with the kid. Cause a lot of times I'm finding, nah, it's not the kid, it's what they're not getting, you know, at home. And, uh, his lifestyle was enough to encourage an adult, uh, you know, he never gave up. And I think we need to get somewhere in the kid mind that no matter what the circumstances are, we just, we, we can't give up, you know? And, and everybody that don't look like you is not against you, and everybody that look like you is not necessarily for you. So I, I think the trajectory has to change, you know, from a lot of people, but it's, it's not, it's not what it should be. Uh, there's a few that's doing it, uh, Nick and I, we talk about a lot of stuff, but to implement it is, it's not complicated for me, cause I'll, I'll touch any issue. But for some, it's, it's just not, you know, there, and I'm hoping we can make some strides.
Well, this was, I think, a good first step, because he, he said some things to the, the kids, and they really enjoyed it.
I mean, he connected them to him and gave them a little money for.
It was money well spent. I don't, I don't know what it cost, but it was, it was well spent.
Oh, yeah, I think so. And you touched on the parent with the board members at the parent, tell me how you felt about the parent night?
I mean, I didn't do all the stuff that he wanted you to do, I mean, he had people jumping and going and doing stuff. And he stopped by Seaborn, and Seaborn's like, he's not gonna talk to me, right? And he asked him, he said, you know, what do you get told, you know, cause you're supposed to make notes about yourself, and he said chill, and that's what we're always telling Seaborn, you gotta chill. Roll rage, you know, chill.
Gary, you were there too?
Yeah, Gary.
It was really good, and my high schooler loved it.
You were there too?
Yeah.
I loved it, I, I mean, a lot of the things that he told us as parents, like we, we criticize ourselves constantly. But it was a lot of the things that, you know, maybe we are doing okay, and so, I really enjoyed it, and my high schooler, she really enjoyed it too, so.
But when the kid went up and regurgitated everything he told him, that's what sold me to say that the money was well spent. Cause kids don't take notes.
Right.
But, but that kid had an courage out of all his peers to go against the odds, do exactly what he was asked to do. And, you know, it was a great outcome. So again, no matter what you spend on it, it was, it was beneficial.
He, um, he was just the guy that we heard in, uh, New Orleans, I'm not New Orleans, whenever that last convention we had, the music guy.
Yeah, Treeport.
Treeport, okay. Both of them talked about their grandmothers. And it tells you what a big influence a grandmother has in your life. But both of them talked about their grandmothers.
You're right, you're right. You're right.
And we find well spent, we, and we find the money from somewhere, we just switch it around and we make things happen, cause we have, well, a small budget, but we're small parents, but we got big ideas of wanting to implement as many as we possibly can. And as far as the teachers are concerned, weren't you, wasn't it, the teachers, what conference was that, um, one of that?
The plane talk, wait.
Right, right.
The one that I asked about, that one?
Well, we, uh, with our child one, child two teachers, um, child one, child two funds, we were gonna send the teachers to, um.
Okay, just plain talk.
Plain talk.
Plain talk without reading.
But anyway, it's a wealth of information out there, and, uh, so I asked him, work, get with some principals and do some selecting there, and then they can bring it back and share it with their, uh, their staff, do PLCs and everything else. You can't send everybody, but you go get the information and bring it back, so that's what you asked about doing, I said, sure, we can do it, you know, we just have to, uh, decide who's gonna do it, and when you get it, get the information, go keep it to yourself, bring it back and share it at your school. So we're trying to touch everybody, parents, kids, teachers, everybody. Of course, I'm working on the company building report now, that's when you come air. Make sure all child ones are comparable, comparable as far as staff and as far as funds. So David usually give me the information I need and to run that report, and if it's not right, you gotta move those staff around, but I was, our schools always, uh, pass a book, and also, um, Kelly's giving the information. That's what we're working on now, we're working on that. Reports are a pain. Was that? Reports are a pain.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley.
Well, we aren't ready for you.
I'm, I'm ending with her, we'll try to get to her, she's got, she's got like the highlights, everybody else goes quickly. Nobody wants to follow.
It's been what, two or three months, so I've, I've been itching to find.
All right, so everybody else should get like two seconds.
Okay.
Michael, what do you want to say?
Um, we're still working on getting one-to-one, well, we are one-to-one now, but we're going to replace all of the older Chromebooks for all the students. Uh, this new wave that we just got will make us good and compliant until the year twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-six. So our Chromebook should be good until then, and we'll supplement the broken ones along the way. Uh, we've also got in our hundred, uh, laptops for the teachers and administrations that needed it. Uh, we had a lot of teachers that were using older, uh, laptops, so those are starting to be put out. And the last thing we're working for on infrastructure are our aged servers. Uh, the last time they were bought was in two thousand and fifteen. So we've got a, a small fund, and I'm working to, uh, work with Bodell and HP and see which one we're gonna go with. To restructure the network, hopefully for the last time, and everything will be, um, situated and, and ready to go, so.
And I like that, but Michael, on, in that line, we were talking about the technology, when he, when we get somebody in, all he do is call, text Michael, he goes and sets up everything, he does things behind the curtain, you know? He gets done, you know, and I do appreciate you doing it, Mike, you only have to tell him about one time, you know? He brings my mind. Tell me what I be doing, you know? So I, I really appreciate Mike, he does a lot, y'all realize, don't realize what he does. Another one needs raised.
I realize they're awesome, but what do we do with our old Chromebooks and our old laptops?
Last week, we just had a major pickup for those Chromebooks, where a company came in and delivered, uh, or picked up about six big huge crates full of old Chromebooks, old servers, old laptops, everything. Um, we don't, we would like to get paid for it, but in order to do that, we have to go through and inventory every single thing in every one of those devices. How big the hard drive is, how big the processors were, how big, we don't have the time or the funds to do that. So most schools, yeah, most schools don't go through it, they send it to a recycling company that gives us a certificate that says that it was destroyed properly, that it was recycled properly, and any data that was on it was wiped clean and not given out to anybody.
There's no way we could give like the teacher that had the laptop an option to buy it for fifty dollars or something like that?
Most of those are not secure enough, by the time we get rid of them, the, the teacher doesn't want it.
We pass them down the line.
Yes.
And so by the time we get rid of them, you can't.
They're shot.
They're shot.
Yeah, they are shot.
Well, that was superior to.
Correct.
And I know, uh, I do have a first argument, you, if you didn't destroy that, if you, you, you went to jail.
There are.
There's so much information on that, even though it was proposed they out there destroying, but the hard drive wasn't, so you'd be in serious trouble.
There's a crate full of hard drives in my office, because I didn't feel secure giving the hard drives out of the servers that went out. Uh, so I pulled all of them and I'll manually destroy them myself.
Wow. It's a lot of work, Mike.
What needs to be done?
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Kristi?
Um, just a couple of quick things, um, as far as accountability goes, our school performance scores, it'll be November before they come out, they have not given us an exact date. She said today in the call that we had, that she hoped they came out before we got off Thanksgiving break, so it's later than it's ever been, and they've been later this year sending each piece of data to us, so, um. As soon as we know that, I'll report that to you. Um, and then on the CTE side, um, I don't know if you've seen our Facebook post, but this is, Friday was manufacturing day, and this is manufacturing week, so we've been posting. Um, our kids did, uh, Art Folk Festival, you saw their booths there, um, Bubba told me that they, they made about five hundred dollars on those booths selling what the kids had made.
I think I shared that post, and, uh, I had a lot of people to message me to ask what it was, cause I didn't know what it was that we were doing, how we went about doing it, because they felt like those were good programs, rather than forcing a kid to college, those kids could learn that type of trade. So that was good.
Yeah, Jenny had a booth and Bubba had a booth, and so Jenny had a saw that they showed how they cut stuff out, but they had birdhouses and signs.
Cause they were selling it, right?
That already made in class that they were selling.
Were they able to make the funds themselves or go to a fund, how does that work?
It, they keep it, Bubba told me today that when they go to competitions, like when they take the kids to the state competitions, that they'll use that money to help feed the kids and that kind of stuff. So, and then they had booths at the carnival last night too, but he didn't know how much they had.
Maybe they could make each one of us a chair that'll stay up.
We went to the program last year, and it was amazing, the kids that come out, well, OSHA qualified, they could just walk in and go to work.
Mike, is there any way you could do like a video or profile them so their parents can see it or whatever? I mean, just, just something to, to, to encourage that kid can go, can go a long way.
You got the equipment.
The, uh, the computer that can design woodwork, my son got one. Hey, these kids, the way I think you can make a fortune.
Our sign out front was provided.
Yeah, I, the sign out front was.
There's two pallets put together.
That's courtesy of the shop.
Little horse doll or something like that.
He finds three pallets.
But keep watching, cause I'm, I'm doing something all week for them. Um, and then this month is also cyber month, so we've been putting that out there for the junior high and the high school, what we offer as far as STEM and computers and that kind of stuff.
Chris, let me give you your flowers, I've watched you over, over the years, uh, coming from where you were at to where you're at now, I think you're comfortable in doing what you're doing, I think you bring valuable information, you're good at what you do, so keep doing what you're doing. And you may go home and say, I find it strange coming from Baron, but look, remember, remember, don't, don't take this wrong, I don't have to like a person to give them credit. I don't have to agree with a person to give them credit, if you're doing the right thing, I would always support that, and I'm not saying I don't like it. I, I will tell a person if I don't like them, cause they don't have to like me, but I'm still gonna give them credit. I, I've always tried to just do that, and, uh, I think you guys, I don't know if the superintendent doing them, I'm a certain she does, but a lot of people go through days and never get rewarded for what they're doing. And I just try, when I see it, you know, to do it. Um, I think it just make you a better person.
Thank you.
I, I give you a raise too. Uh, I, I gave James his, okay.
James, top that.
We're fixing everything, uh, it's not making Mr. Sonnier happy, but, you know, we think, there were a lot of things that, you know, just over time.
I need a roof, I need a roof, he's leaking.
He's, he's looking for a roofer.
Y'all look around the corner, y'all see a roof, send it to me.
Uh, you know, I know Ms. Russell, uh, I'm making a lot of her cafeteria ladies, uh, keeping them happy because they had, you know, various things, uh, we, we got four ovens up and running now at the high school, so I know, I know they're happy about that, uh, so. Maintenance is doing good as far as getting everything fixed as quickly as possible.
James? I have asked the superintendent about you.
Yes, sir.
And she gave me thumbs up.
Hey, well, that'd be my Russ Dilly.
Anyway, my uncle was concerned, but I mean, she, she, she's doing a good job, and I, I just, I mean, I, you're right, you're right, you're wrong, you're wrong. When I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Get some flowers?
They may not be alive, but, cause Randy gave me a remedy to, to, uh, that stuff you gave him, man, it killed a tree. It was my, it was my mama's last tree, it was a medicinal tree, and, uh, I had to ask Randy for a remedy to kill some stuff, I put this in there and killed the tree.
Why'd you put it on a tree?
Oh, no, it couldn't. No, it couldn't kill the tree. It did, man. I'm gonna send you a picture. Huh?
You wanted the tree dead?
No, no, no. We was trying to revive it. Yeah, I know. It killed a tree, man.
I don't get a raise.
No, man, I'm just kidding. I just like having a good party, man.
Rebecca?
A little scared to say anything. No, um, I wanna brag a little bit on the team at the high school. Um, you guys probably remember, oh, how many years ago? Two years ago, we um, got approval for Charlie.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Who's our academic recovery specialist. And I know, like, he has a really long name. What does he even do? But this year, um, Ms. Bridget Maxwell has taken over a little bit more responsibility, leadership specifically at the high school. And she works very closely with Charlie and then of course with Ms. Kim Rushing and um, with Gwen Williams, who is the other special education teacher there. And what Charlie does is he sort of helps them navigate when a kid is getting close to absences that are gonna require them to go to credit recovery or when a kid is missing a lot of assignments. You know, what's really priority? What do we need to do? And so this is not our first year to do it, but where we have been with the high school students with IEPs at this point in the first nine weeks compared to where we have been. And there's a lot of reasons for that, you know, COVID, coming back from COVID and all that. But where we are right now is amazing compared to where we were before. We still have a couple.
This president and director are going to be incredible.
We still have a couple of kids who are, are stragglers, but uh, Ms. Maxwell, Ms. Bridget Maxwell, uh, actually devotes a lot of her own time and she's running credit recovery just for students with IEPs on Mondays outside. It's making a huge impact. I also wanna note, and I hate to even say this out loud, cause I'm afraid I'm gonna jinx this, but right now, um, we only have three students that are completely virtual in the parish. And that is due to some really, you know, high significant needs. And I, I think all the research and, and everything is out there. You guys know, we're gonna do better with our kids if they're here in school. And after, you know, we shut down, I never thought we would get to a point where I would be saying, we only have three virtual kids in the school system. So we have done a great job of getting our kids back in school and, and keeping them here. So and that's, you know, runs through my department. I mean, that's every single person. That's principals who have called and hounded people and said, please let your kid come back to school. Just give me, you know, two weeks with them. And that's, you know, teachers who have brought instruction to a really high level so that kids wanna be at school. I'm just the one who, you know, processes the paperwork. But that says a lot for our school system because a lot of places are still struggling with huge percentages of kids who are virtual and we only have three in our school system. So that's amazing. Um, I don't know if anybody saw the pictures, but um, also post-COVID, the Arkham Miss Fair was back. So a lot of our students with disabilities were able to go back on that annual trip. And that means a lot to those kids. The fair has a free day for our, um, for our students that are able to go. And we haven't been able to do that the past couple of years. So that came back this year and it, you know, I support all the rigor and, yeah, everything else that we have to do. But I love it when we can take a day and do those things and have those amazing experiences for our kids too. And this afternoon, um, we finished up some IEP training that we've been working on. Uh, you've got a plan to talk about Dr. Jeremy Bell. He is over the Special Education Program at ULM and he comes and works here with us every Tuesday, um, as a consultant is doing our ed testing and that sort of thing. But he has been doing some IEP training with our teachers and we finished the second half of it today. And so it's really great that our folks have at work access to the person who's training all the special education teachers in northeast Louisiana. So we're really blessed to have him on board.
He's done a lot of stuff. I tried to talk really fast.
Yeah, and, and I don't have nearly that much because I'm gonna sit in a beam over uh, literacy reports. But as of a theme, I've been checking my phone, uh, we have our elementary football championship going on right now. And in the third quarter, C.E.S. Wildcat seven, Grayson Warriors twenty. Union Central place next. So we'll see how the end result comes. Uh, my principals are amazing. They, uh, they work beautifully as a team. Everything they do from uh, meeting at the concession stand, uh, for every, before every elementary football game. They have met up as a team, gotten everything going, got everything iced down and the cheese and the chili and the nachos. They load everything up together. They pack it up together. Um, they just are a well-oiled machine. And as Rebecca said, they uh, operate their schools like Chick-fil-A. So um, I'm very proud of them. And um, the teachers equally, uh, very engaging lessons. That's why our kids are back in school. Uh, they're having fun learning. And uh, it's evident, uh, we have individual targets for each kid and they're growing and we're seeing that leaps and bounds. And next week, we have our Anet coach and district coach coming in for a visit. So we'll get some individual feedback from them as well.
Now Maria.
If you'll look at your handout that Katie, uh, Katie, I compared last year where we were to this year. And so last year in twenty-one in August, we had twenty-one point eight percent of our kids on grade level. Now in August this year, we have thirty-three point nine. So we are gaining our kids back and putting them back on grade level. And then in September of last year, we were thirty-three point two and this year at thirty-seven point three. So we are getting those gains. And the reason behind some of this is because we implemented that new Spire phonics program. Uh, the teachers have been trained in it. We're, we meet monthly and we make individualized plans based on their data. And they, uh, and the interventions go in and, and support the teachers as well as helping those students. They are very prescriptive based on that. The K to three teachers and administrators now are going through the science of reading training. We're going back to what I love the old school foundations because there was some skills that kind of went away. But we realized now and due to COVID and all the virtual things happening, it, it set our kids back. And Mr. Reynolds, last year you asked about the upper grades. This year we are guaranteeing K to six. We have brought those in. Uh, we have, we've implemented on the next page, implemented a cadence. It's a screener. We do, uh, we're going to do three times a year, K to six. And it tells us what foundational skills those kids are needing. That way, if the kid's in sixth grade, he's reading, not on grade level, we can backtrack and say, let's go back and see where these kids at. And let's fill those gaps. So this does take a lot of planning. We have a great support team at the district level, school level. So it takes all of us working together as well as our parents and helping another hand what our kids need. Uh, we have, Ms. Wiley also purchased our data system where we actually take our scores, put them in, and then it gives us our reports. Uh, Ms. Meredith, also giving her kudos because she helped us partner with a Bailey group that has the NTSS, which multi-tier support system. Have you ever come to sit in a meeting with them? Wow. Uh, it, it, we go in, we take um, the data reports and we make a plan for each child. And it's child specific. We don't just say, oh, this is in one group. No, it's per child. And according to our data that you saw on the first page, page, it's becoming effective. We're, we're making those gains and hopefully uh, get them where they need to be. So we're, we're excited about that. We're gonna progress monitor because if you're doing those interventions and we don't know if they're working or not. So now we're gonna be progress monitoring either five to eight days and see, are those interventions those teachers are doing and the interventions working? Because if they're not, we need to change something to, for that child to give them what they need. So little by little, we are gaining ground. Uh, the state released two, and I wrote them in that summary on the back, two programs that we use. The lift is geared for your grades of three to six, where we can take a quick screener like we do Dible's and say, okay, this kid needs vowel control. This kid's need this specific skill. So let's fill that gap quickly so that kid become a proficient reader. Uh, and how important it is. Spire is something the teachers are now implementing where it's a whole group and it goes back to the spelling, the grammar. And what my feedback from teachers and principals is, the teachers will love it because they're actually saying, wow, these gaps our kids missed through COVID and the pandemic, now we're actually having to pull back and help them get where they need to be. So we are using constantly research-based strategies and we're making gains. And I'm very pleased at what's going on and I'm gonna see progress. Very pleased.
She's so busy.
Maria, I, I ain't, I ain't gonna say nothing. I just text you. Nigga, let me ask you this. This is serious. Uh, this, this was a three-year grant, right?
Yes. Yes.
When you're two?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's obvious that this is working. Are we looking to see what we can do to maybe continue, even if, even if you retire or whatever? Cause I think the position that was created, it, it has brought valuable information.
She's not retiring. Love her ears.
Expire, we still have a way to maybe offset it.
We will get what they have and we'll figure something out.
Yeah, cause I, I, I think it's, it's an asset because, like I said, I, I think the rest of them, not that we're willing to, and the other stuff, I just, cause it was something I was reluctant about, but I mean, it, it's bringing exactly what we need to know. And again, I guess the other question is, the, the, the reporter's not here. Again, this is information that needs to be out there, you know.
Right, right.
Marketed.
Yeah.
Cause I, and I'll tell you the reason why. I keep seeing, you know, posts after posts, uh, kids are failing, the teacher's not doing this, all that other stuff. And I, I, I've learned now, I don't even debate.
Don't believe it. They're doing a great job.
But again, it, it hurts me because obviously they either not seeing it or they just dislike what we're doing. And uh, I just think the more we.
We just have to tell the narrative.
Right.
We have to tell the story. We have so many good things going on. And that's why these um, men and women stay to tell you what's going on so that people watch the video and they communicate. They, we, we control the narrative because we have a lot of good things going on in our schools.
This is very good information. You can compare from last year to now. And I think we all were worried about COVID, but it seems as if we're, we're, we're putting a dent.
We are. Yeah, they work hard. They work hard.
And I just interject that, um, I couldn't do this without her. And all of these initiatives that have come down for elementary, there's no way I, I could make all this happen, you know, without Maria and her expertise and, and literacy and helping share that load. But we're miles ahead of every district I sit with in any meeting, so.
And, and that's another position I debated the superintendent on. So I always have to say when I'm wrong, I was wrong.
She's found the right seat with us. That's right.
It's just a wonder, you know, everybody, they're comfortable doing their job, which, you know, in the past, it's been a thirty years. Some people haven't been comfortable in the position that they've been doing. So that tells me that something is going on right. You know, I mean, it, it is. I, that's what I see.
To me, the number one factor is that child. I have a third grade great granddaughter at uh, Junior Center Elementary. And my four-year-old great grandson and uh, that's.
He's the pre-k.
Let me tell you, he, this young fellow talks as if he's fifty years old. And he loves going to school. Something I learned as a teacher. That child know if you care about him. I don't care what all this stuff he does. If that child is not happy being taught, he never learn. That's the bottom line. I know I'm old fashioned, but this works. My grand, great granddaughter, she's gonna be in the thing on Friday. That's all she's been talking about all of the week.
And they ought to enjoy school. They ought to enjoy these days.
They enjoy school.
Exactly.
And my, my, my professor, uh, his four-year-old, he wants to know why we don't go to school on Monday. As if, hey, he said, what is this talking about? Being that young? But I salute all of y'all. That's the key. Teaching yourself don't mean nothing. It's the child. But that's gonna be our future generation. See, I know, I'm not gonna be here long, much longer, but then I could be. But I want somebody to be able to carry on this.
That's right.
That's the key.
That's mine.
That's the key, Jay.
Well, sure.
Deedow.
All right. Uh, Jay is superintendent's report.
All right, I'm pretty much sure. Um, so um, just homecoming is Friday and we will, I don't think the ceremony's at ten o'clock on Friday. We'll dismiss at twelve o'clock and then have the parade downtown at one o'clock. And then um, two o'clock, parade two o'clock. And then um, tailgating and y'all come to the game. I, I think the alumni band is gonna be playing and the alumni cheerleaders are gonna be there. The junior high cheerleaders and dance are coming over. So it'll be a fun night. Um, so I encourage you to come out for that.
Dance again?
I'm not dancing. Once a year is all I can do.
Nigga, you dance?
You miss it.
No, 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 no. I saw it. I saw it.
Once a year, yeah. Um, and then parent-teacher conferences are the twentieth, so that's next Thursday. And so we'll have an early dismissal that day and that way, um, they can have parent-teacher conferences that afternoon and then it extends on to six-thirty for those parents who are at work. But our goal is a hundred percent, um, whether it's in person or on the phone or the, um, you know, Google Meet. It's just that every parent has a conversation with the teacher about their student. So um, that's the goal. And then the last thing is at the November meeting, I just wanna put on your radar, we need to discuss, like we did last year, we had that excess sales tax money. Um, that can, it can only be paid out in um, teacher salary or employee salaries. And so um, David's been running the numbers, but we need to put on the agenda for November to try to see if we want to give that out again.
Well, yeah, we wanna give, just go and run the numbers and give us some figures.
Yeah, for Christmas. But it has been an agenda item and he didn't bring it to my attention until today and it was too late to put it on the agenda. We need to put it on the November meeting, which is what, the seventh?
Can you, can you put it on there for approval, not for discussion? I mean, for approval? You can bring the numbers.
It's excess money that's on taxpayers.
That's what I'm saying. If you give us the.
It's nice to get it out in your checks.
So will they be able to get it for Christmas? If we do it in November?
They'll have it for Black Friday, huh?
We meet on Monday next month.
Oh, is it on Monday?
Yes.
What's the, what's the date?
November the seventh.
November the seventh.
That's cause election is the next day, right?
We're out of town for like two consecutive weeks.
But in the election, uh, school, we don't, we don't use your, your circular motor.
Kelly.
So school is not out though, right?
No, not just.
What about the tennis court?
Oh, tennis courts, yeah. So the, um, I don't know if y'all saw, but the, the truck's there and they're getting ready and uh, the plan is barring any weather, it'll be completed by December thirty-first.
What, what did y'all decide on the six hundred thousand that was left on the projects? Did we decide?
We're gonna, we're gonna redo the.
Tennis court?
What, we're doing the tennis court, of course. That's already.
See, that's gonna be done by the.
Next thing is gonna be the football field and the track. And uh, we're gonna have enough money to basically do football field, drainage.
Really?
Take care of the drainage and the uh, crown, and re-crown the football field. And also the possibility of doing a practice field behind the old, uh,
That'll be awesome.
Behind the uh, the visitors, including back in there.
Oh, we.
Possibility doing that.
What about the track? You said something about the track.
The track and all the drainage, fix, fix the drainage, cause that's, that's a lot of the problem with the track, is the drainage.
So if we fix the track, we're gonna fix the track, we're gonna have leaks there.
We're gonna have to cut out pieces of the track and all that. And hopefully we should, and it looks like we probably have enough money to do that.
Good.
That way we can go back to having home track meets and having uh, cross-country and. At home tennis meets, yeah.
Also on the practice field, we talked about putting lights out there. So during the home, during the home games, the kids can, but they have to be monitored.
Yeah.
The kids can go back there and uh, play their little games like they wanna play, you know.
I used to do it right there in front.
Will we have lechers for the tennis court?
What?
Lechers for the tennis court?
We have two sets right now that are over there. Um, so, and that's something we can certainly look at.
Yeah, we could.
And then all the other projects that we discussed there, every, everything that we discussed doing is gonna be, is gonna.
So there will be lights at the tennis court.
So we did well choosing Mr. Redstone.
No, he did, he's good. I'm doing a good job.
They ain't found much.
No, but you, but you don't, you don't. I mean, take the credit. You're doing what you're supposed to do, which is giving us the feedback and, and everybody's comfortable with what you're doing. At, at least I am.
Yeah, I think we all are.
Yeah.
I make a motion with your.
I make a motion we adjourn.